Our next resolution is to reject all proposals for solid waste recycling collection.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I've got a couple of motions to make regarding this resolution. The first one would be I move that we amend this resolution to reject all the proposals and for the city of Quincy to cease providing curbside garbage and recycling pickup at a date to be determined by the administration. This would be in your packets, the Amendment A that I offered. This would be for full privatization where the folks, where we would create a permitting, our licensing fee per truck, and would allow the residents to contract with the waste hauler of their choice. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend, or yes, to amend the resolution? Okay. Are there any questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
No.
Mann?
No.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermill?
Aye.
Farha?
No.
Sasson?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolino?
No.
Brink?
No.
Heinecke?
No.
Hose lock?
No.
Three yeses and 11 no's.
The amendment is defeated.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I make an alternate motion that we accept the combination of solid waste recycling collection submitted by Republic Services, Inc., and that would be the original proposal A for the 1320 fixed rate per month.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
Mann?
No.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermill?
Aye.
Farha?
No.
Sasson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolino?
Nope.
Brink?
No.
Heinecke?
No.
Hose lock?
No.
Two yeses and 12 no's.
Okay. That amendment is defeated. With that being said, with the city not having the option to privatize, to give you an idea of the process, we will need a motion to adopt the resolution, which would then formally reject the proposals before we do that. After that, then, we would need to accept a proposal for Quincy Recycle and then handle our yard waste. Now, after the resolutions, there's an ordinance. And I think, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about this in the community, and I understand that people feel very frustrated, and, you know, I do too. This is a learning experience on garbage and recycle where there's no easy button, there's no easy solution, and how do we come to this? Because we needed a new trucks. We have a fleet that's 13 years old, and unfortunately, very little money set aside to replace this. And so, the hard decision comes, how do we pay for it? Do we pay for it by cutting from other departments? Do we pay for it by placing it on your property taxes? Or do we look at our system as a whole and find out if there's a better way to pay for it with a sticker price increase? And certainly, when I started out, we thought it was a good time to evaluate the efficiency of our operations. Before we go and spend a million dollars on new trucks or commit ourselves to another seven years of delivering service, let's find out if the private sector can do this more efficiently and at a cheaper cost than the city of Quincy can. And when those numbers came back, I supported that proposal. In fact, if it would have passed here tonight, I still would have supported it. We have a lot of challenges in the city of Quincy. We have pension obligations that are going to continue to rise, and there's really, quite frankly, little that we can do unless the state of Illinois gets serious about public safety pension reforms. We've got that cost rising. We know that, on top of that, our revenues for the garbage stickers have been relatively flat over years. We also know that our benefits continue to rise. We know workers' compensation continues to rise. We know insurance continues to rise. So how do we make sure that we're able to deliver the same service tomorrow that we can today and the years before? And there are some people who've told me, "Mayor, you know, in the 80s and 90s, we paid for this off of our property tax." But then along came in 1991, or maybe a year before that, to say, "We can no longer afford to do this, so we have to have stickers." And now, the financial realities of the day have said, "We need to change the way we're doing it." I would love to do business the same way we did in the 80s and 90s, but our pension costs aren't the same, our insurance costs aren't the same, and our cost to deliver the program is not the same. And I understand there's some frustration because of the fact that there seems to be last-minute proposals offered, but I'd also say that that comes with transparency. You know, I offered to usher in an air of transparency in the community where people can come with ideas, and that's what we're about. We're about coming together as a community for one goal. And, you know, during the privatization process, one alderman came up to me and said, "Well, why don't you at least propose continuing down the same process?" So we did that. We had another member of the community who said, "You know what? A lot of people have an issue with the flat monthly rate, so why don't you propose tying it to the water bills and water consumption?" So we did that. And so, we had a lot of ideas upfront, and then I would say during the Thanksgiving holiday, Christmas, and January, there weren't a lot of ideas that were proposed. But that's okay. In January, we still submitted to the garbage and recycle and to the council $1 stickers and gave them half for that. And so, I understand where people might think this proposal's our last minute, but in reality, these numbers have been out there for a while. And I certainly commend Alderman Lepper, or Alderwoman Lepper and Alderman Farha for throwing their hat in the arena, for putting their idea out there. Because if we're ever going to move forward as a community, we need people to be invested in the process. And I will say, I was 100% for privatization, and like I said, I would still vote for it now, but as mayor, I have to be willing to compromise if we're going to move forward with this issue. I have to be willing to say that I can't always get 100% of what I ask for every time, which is why when Alderwoman Lepper wanted to meet with us, I said, "Sure, let's find a way where we can find some common ground." And I would say that if there's 14 members of the council, 15 including me, and we're going to have some difficult decisions in the future, and if each one of us demands 100% perfection from every solution that's proposed, this city is going to be at a standstill. And so, I know there's going to be some amendments offered later, and I would just urge the council to, even if you don't agree with it 100% of the time, let's move forward, let's build consensus, and let's have a vision for the program, and that makes our decisions a heck of a lot easier from here on out. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution and reject the proposals from the various people on solid waste and recycling collection.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
No.
Havermill?
No.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hose lock?
Aye.
13 ayes, 2 no's.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is to enter into a five-year contract with Quincy Recycle Incorporated for recycling.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move we adopt the resolution, but I would like for Jim Murphy to come forward after there's a second to that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Insurance purchasing director, Jim Murphy.
Jim, there were some questions raised about the low bidder and whether that low bidder was qualified or not. Can you bring us through that whole process?
This is the Quincy Recycle.
Oh, the recycle.
Yeah, this is not the yard waste.
I'm ahead of myself. Okay.
Yeah, you might want to s-
That's fine.
Yeah, it says-
You might want to stand.
So this is just- For the recycling and not the yard waste.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead. Alderman Brink.
Part of the RFP for this was a 60-day notice to suspend the contract. Is that right? And would that be in the contract?
Correct. That would be, that would be a negotiated contract at this point.
Is that on? It doesn't sound like it does. Well, this is why.
... with legal counsel, the actual terms of the contract.
But that was part of the RFP process.
That was part of the RFP process.
So I'm assuming that would be in the contract?
Yes.
Thank you.
Typically, the RFP is part of the contract, and that's kind of legal language we have in it.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermill?
Aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hose lock?
Aye.
14 ayes.
So ordered.
Our next resolution is to enter into a five-year contract with Evans Recycling for yard waste, and we do have speakers on this.
Alderman Farha.
Move we suspend the rules and allow the speakers to-
Your honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
Before we suspend the rules, I'd like to have Mr. Murphy make a comment regarding some information he found out late last week. Okay. So my question stands now. It was just a step early.
When we had, several weeks ago, we had the committee meeting with finance and central services. There was discussion on, you know, do you need an IEPA permit to have just a transfer station, as they would call it, for yard waste? So in essence, if the yard waste was gone within 24 hours, do you need a permit? I was originally told from the EPA, yes. I think one of the bidders had talked to them, and they was informed, no. I think Alderman Deuster House had suggested the same thing, that what they had told him was, no, that you did not need that. After that meeting, I tried contacting them again, and finally ended up getting with a David Jansen, which his title is, I believe, is the area director for IEPA. And basically, he had contacted me also wanting to know what the other bidder was, where their proposal was, where they wanted to put the transfer station, where all the, you know, all the information was going. I had given him some of the information that had been provided to me, and basically, just reading briefly what he said was that Illinois EPA permit is required to own and operate a 24-hour or less landscape waste transfer station. And, I mean, there's a little bit more stuff in here, kind of talking about that, but the last thing said is all these applications are detailed and require a licensed PE for the application to be submitted. So I just wanted to present that information, how relevant it is. He did talk about that if, once the application process has started, it could take 90 days as long as everything is kosher, they like the site and everything like that. If there's any questions, he said, it can take up to six months.
Jim, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When did we accept proposals on this?
I think the proposals had to be in October 11th, I believe.
So we had them in October?
Correct.
And wasn't our goal to choose a vendor by the end of the year?
I believe that is correct initially, and then I think with everything else that had transpired, that got, kept getting pushed.
And wasn't the idea there to give enough lead time to do what, anything that was necessary to prepare?
I-
A winning vendor to prepare?
Correct. I think that was the original intent was, so if we had everything by January, you know, anybody from garbage recycling to whatever would have time to do what they needed to do. I agree with you there.
So now, we are two months past our goal date, and it would appear that there's not enough time for the low bidder to get the permits necessary. And I do understand that it is a site permit, is what it is.
And, yeah, you know, just, all I have is the information he sent to me in an email, what that entails, you know, what an engineering firm would have to go through. I didn't look at the actual application itself. But I agree. I mean, I think that was the intent of it, you know, part of the RFP process, and I was probably in a dozen different places. It did say everywhere between, it was yard waste, garbage recycling, whatever, that all permits were necessary. Unfortunately, I think there was just some misinformation from the state that came out that may have prevented him from being able to do what he wanted to do.
Or possibly our delay.
I mean, potential. I-
Well, I think it's important that the timeline was set up because our contracts were expiring. Our contracts were originally set to expire, I don't believe this one was December. Was this one February?
I believe so.
Yeah. So then, we moved it to May, and mind you, the garbage and recycling committee took it up, three, four weeks ago, I think, it's right around there. So, you know, our contracts are expiring, and I believe, from an administration standpoint, when we're looking at how do, you know, what bidders we would recommend, having somebody that's already approved by the EPA and not somebody that has a contingent on the EPA where we have to make a recommendation that if they don't get approved by the EPA, I think that's where we, you know, would lean towards somebody who's already provided the service and already licensed.
The person that started out at the city without a license-
Right.
-initially. I don't know how you would expect someone to get a license if they didn't know they were going to be chosen, especially when you go through the-
Alderman Sasson.
Jim, had we accepted the low bid, he would have had time to get his license. And did Mr. Jansen talk about how difficult these licenses are to obtain?
All he told me was you had to have a licensed PE to submit the application. He didn't tell, I didn't look at it. He didn't go into details on that. On the flip side, I do know they had concerns about where the transfer station was going to go down on Radio, or is it, yeah, Radio Road again. Not saying that he couldn't get it done. I mean, I'm not Illinois EPA, and I'm not going to stipulate one way or the other, but I think they had some concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Rules are suspended. We will hear from our speakers as they are printed on the agenda. First speaker will be Mr. Rex Evans. Mr. Evans, if you could state your name and address for the record. I'll remind you, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Rex Evans with Evans Recycling. We currently are doing the processing for you. We're at Murrayville, Illinois, and have been in business for several years. We currently take care of several cities right now. That's one thing that I think is kind of beneficial to what we can do. Back there, when we had the storm, which I know you all well, we've actually had three different storms that we've had. By when we first started, we had a straight wind storm, then we had an ice storm, and then we had the big one. And at that time, why, we were able to take in, just in the city residents alone, we had over 1,400 people per day come into the brush site, and we were able to process the material and keep it going. That didn't include the city trucks, the state trucks, the county trucks, and all of the other people that, as far as like your landscape people, that were coming in to do it. And, I don't know, that was pretty rough time for us because of the expense that we incurred that was way out above. It pretty much doubled our expenses that we had just taking care of the storm to where our profit for that year was basically zero for that year. If it wasn't for the five-year contract, why, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have worked the best for us. But anyway, why, you know, I put some papers together. I didn't know whether anybody wanted to see them. You know, I had recommendations from Ken Cantrell whenever he was in there, and some of this stuff that we were doing. I know it was brought up the last meeting when you guys talked about this, that we had just started. But actually, we had already taken care of the old city brush site before we took on this site, back there when Alan Vandabo was in there. And we also had two grinders at the time, and we also had the trucks and loaders and equipment to do the processing. So we weren't green whenever we started this. If we were, why, we might have had a little more problems whenever the storms occurred. But anyway, why, that's pretty much what I wanted to say about this, that I appreciate the opportunity to do, to serve you, and I hope we've done a good job for you. And I've always told everybody that's ahead of the thing, if you've got any problems to call, then we would address it immediately. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Thank you for your time. Okay, next, we have Jerry Brockhouse. Mr. Brockhouse, if you could state your name and address for the record. Mind you, you have five minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. My name's Jerry Brockhouse from Jacksonville, Illinois, and I put in a proposal back in October 11th, had to have it in. And I figured I'd save the city over $400,000 for a five-year period time. And I got the equipment, and it's all leased and all brand new. And as far as having two trucks, I got a backup truck for that coming if I get the proposal. And as far as the EPA permit, I can have it within anywhere from a month to 90 days. They guaranteed me that today when I was over there in Springfield, Illinois.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion. We resume sitting as city council?
Move we resume the rules.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? We are now sitting as a city council. Okay, we still have a, we need a motion and a second for a resolution on the yard waste.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for Jim Murphy before there's-
Yes.
-any action taken. So, has anything that you've heard persuaded you that the advice you gave the finance/joint recycle and garbage collection committee to change that recommendation you gave us or to withdraw some of the-
I think my biggest concern is just what I know from what the EPA has contacted me about is just the permit side of it, to get things done in the timely fashion.
And I also, I think it was a week ago, two weeks ago, I was at a conference here in Quincy and had two gentlemen from ADM approach me, and they had concerns about traffic. If we go back to the site on Radio Road, and I know that that's something that, one, wasn't factored into the original recommendation, but two, is something to take note of.
I mean, I, from a standpoint, I haven't really never met either one. I've never met Evans until just several months ago, as we had some meetings. I've talked to Jerry on the phone and through emails. I don't have a preference with either one. My concern is just a timeline standpoint now with the EPA. That would be my biggest concern.
Well, and this was not a bid. This was a request for proposal that allows us to consider concerns like the one you're putting forward and the administration has put forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're not required to have detailed specs and accept a low bidder?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I want to entertain some type of motion.
I move we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Deuster.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, I understand that we have great leeway when it comes to a request for a proposal. However, we go out and solicit these in the interest of competition in order to save money, and in this instance, we could potentially save $400,000 over the life of this contract. And now, it doesn't appear like it's a viable option available to us anymore, mainly because of our own inaction on the proposals, not allowing enough time for someone to put their permit in place. I, you know, I'm just dumbfounded that it would appear that we are so inept that we allowed that to transpire.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
No.
Mann?
No.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Holbrook?
No.
Havermill?
Aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
No.
Heinecke?
No.
Hose lock?
No.
Three ayes, 11 no's.
The resolution fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Where does that leave us?
Well, we'll have a resolution on the agenda next week for Ms. Brockhouse.
Thank you.
Okay, I have an ordinance up for adoption, and this is regarding the sticker rate.
Your honor.
Yes, Alderwoman.
I move that we make an amendment to the proposed ordinance and that we change the $1 sticker rate to a $0.75 sticker rate.
Okay, so you change your amendment to the-
Yes, on my, yes, on the amendment to have $1 stickers and to have a tote at $1,299 per month, that we modify this to $0.75 stickers and the tote staying the same at $1,299 per month.
And Alderwoman, I think because of the fact we would need to order more additional stickers that our rates are 50 cents, is there a way that you can also amend to reflect May 1st as the change date, effective date?
Yes, and that the effective date becomes May 1st.
Okay.
I have just a couple of questions, Jennifer, as we've talked. Are you in a second?
A point of order would be we need a motion.
We need a motion, and we need-
Before we discuss.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We didn't get a second, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alderman Farha.
Yes, Jennifer.
Did Brian?
Yes. Do you have any intention of sending to the recycle and garbage collection committee the concept of some sort of license fee?
Yes, that is not able to be part of this ordinance.
Right.
If you looked at the first draft of the ordinance, the franchise fee or a license fee was in there, but due to legalities, right now, that will come back to council at a later date. That was not allowed to be in this particular ordinance.
And then, the second question is, in terms of the $1,299 tubs, you still intend to go up to, to provide pre-orders to go up to 1,500 tubs?
Correct.
And we're not requiring that people use any kind of outside service, anything of that nature?
No. This is, I mean, if they still want to use the private service, they're allowed to with this particular ordinance.
So the only substantive difference between your ordinance and my ordinance, since the rate is now $0.75 on amendment, is basically the introduction of an option for people to use tubs if they wish to.
Correct.
And we're not micromanaging the administration. They then have the option, if they want to consider automation, to do that.
Correct.
What would be my intention then to withdraw any effort that I had to change the ordinance, since you and I are basically speaking exact same language-
Correct.
-with the addition in yours that you're interjecting the idea of totes if people would so choose up to 1,500 a year?
Correct.
Yeah, and then, my intention is I'm not going to offer anything. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And this isn't sour grapes because of the other vote, but I would add, what does, if there is a problem, if we agree that there's a problem with our budget, and if we agree this is one way to address that problem, and if we, if you're saying you agree with the administration's numbers they've provided, what does this fix?
Alderman, I would say that it at least gives us the ability in the future to close that budget, the general fund subsidy.
How far into the future?
Well-
We're committed for seven years. The day we adopt this, we're committed for seven years. Okay? There's no going back.
One thing that we're going to have to do, Paul, and as a council, we're going to have to create even more efficiencies. As you've kind of seen here, we've cut down the number of garbage trucks that we were planning on ordering from seven down to four. We're also going to have to reroute the city, so that's why the pre-orders going into effect for the tubs. People might have different trash pickup dates from now on because we're going to have to look and seeing a more efficient way so we have less trucks on the roads, we have less fuel, and less trucks going to the landfill, taking our trash over there. I mean, we need to become more efficient and rework this. I mean, a lot more work is going to be done in the garbage and recycling committee on this before it's all said and done.
Well, but what I'm saying is, we're being asked to vote on something. We have absolutely no empirical data about what, how it's going to work. I mean, we have nothing. It may or may not fix a problem. It may or may not be more efficient. It may or may not encumber us for seven years, and it may or may not, it doesn't fix anything. It, I just, I don't understand why we would be voting on something that we have no, I mean-
understand why we would be voting on something that we have no, I mean, anyway, I would just like a better explanation of the detail and what we're, what we are fixing with this.
I think in my discussions with Alderwoman Lepper and some of the Aldermen, it moves the council for some form of consensus on the issue. Does it completely solve the issue or the problem? No, as you stated, and I would say that, but at least now, it guides the community, and it guides the council, and it guides the administration on a common vision. And so that way, we can move forward and put the issue behind us. Does it solve all the issues? No. But the more automated we go, we can all argue that there will probably be more efficiencies. There would be less exposure to workers' compensation claims, and it also gives us the opportunity to modernize our trucks. So, again, Alderman, I would say I agree with you that it doesn't solve all the issues, but it at least is a step in the right direction and moves the community forward.
I want to make sure I understand, though. We're going to have a hybrid system where we could have totes if they want, or they're still picking up the trash and putting it in the back. Okay, so our MIC is not going to be affected whatsoever until five years after we do a five-year look back. Okay, so that won't, that doesn't change. I'm just trying to understand what the advantage to this program is. We can say we can reach a consensus, but reaching consensus, to reach consensus is nothing. That is absolutely ridiculous. That, to me, that's a silly statement. You either believe in what you're doing or you don't. And quite frankly, my, my understanding was that we believed that privatization was the way to fix this. We've moved off that four times now, as an administration and as a council. And I am, I refuse to sit up here and vote strictly to reach a consensus just to reach a consensus. That's silly. So, I guess we can call the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman.
I just would like to add, I understand Alderman Havermill's frustration, but there does come a time when we try to move the community forward. Secondly, and maybe more importantly, there are essential services of city government, just like there are at any level of government. They're to do the things we can't do for ourselves. Over the course of human history, societies that refused to engage in sanitation and removal of that have paid a price with a variety of diseases. I think this is an essential form of government as is fire, as is police protection, and we have an obligation. The general fund has supported it. This doesn't change that. If coming to a consensus with Alderman Lepper and the administration to try this new service, moves it forward, I will openly embrace it. But you can make the assumption that trying to fix a system that's not really broken and trying to return the focus on essential services that the general fund goes to support, we support many things that probably the society as a whole and the community as a whole would not agree to. But certainly, I think we can come to the conclusion that we need to pick up trash. It benefits all of us, both aesthetically and health-wise. So, I'm more than willing to vote for Alderman Lepper's proposal. I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Alderman, I would ask you, though, my question again would be, I guess I look at all the other communities that do this, and I know I'm not going to change anybody's mind, but what would your answer to that be? I mean, are we the only community that can figure out how to do this? Only can be a government function? I don't get it.
No, well, for example, we're not the same size as Puria. We don't have Caterpillar Tractor Company in Quincy that provides over 100,000 worldwide jobs. And to be honest with you, we have a large population that's under, under the, the poor, what is it? Poverty line. And the reality is, I think it's in excess of 40%. So, we have to worry about them, too. And they all affect us. If, if people dump their trash in streets because we raise the price too high or the service becomes too expensive, it affects our health. So, that's my answer to it. I can't worry about what Puria does. I'm not in Puria.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman, district.
Mr. Chairman, on the face of it, it seems like a hybrid or putting two systems in place creates some kind of random system that, on the face of it, is not going to save money, it's going to cost us more to do. I mean, you either do one thing or you do the other. I'm not convinced that the automation that's been proposed achieves any of our supposed goals. As the Alderman said, the system wasn't broke, in spite of what people said about it. It was not broke. It functions effectively, and people like the system they have. And it's not incumbent upon us to change something that isn't broken.
Yeah, Jennifer, the 1,500 people, is that the total that would be allotted to get totes, period?
They had to kind of figure some numbers in here, and Glenda can correct me if I'm wrong. But it's my understanding, you were just taking, when she was figuring the 1,500 customers, she was figuring how many, an estimate, and a low estimate of that fact, by how many people, when we did the survey, have, was it, how many bags did you, four bags or more?
Four bags.
A week that they put in there. So, they totaled up the numbers, and they estimated a low estimate. So, it's not saying we're going to cap it at 1,500. If there's more than 1,500 that want to, that's why we're going to have a sign-up date for the service, and then they need to sign up for it by that particular date so that we can reroute this and we can make it work, so we can create those efficiencies. The other thing that's, is that we might not need two drivers on a particular garbage truck if we do go to an automated tote. Since they do have the lift, we possibly will only need that one driver, so that's another efficiency that we're able to create by, you know, moving our staff around a little bit.
Also, you made the comment that we were going to do rerouting.
Yes.
Which is going to make things efficient.
Yes.
We, I don't believe we've rerouted our pickup days for, perhaps, has it been 20? It may have been. I mean, it's been decades, and we have, if you look at Friday shifts, which cover our east portion, they're quite large. So, no matter what we do, even if, even if the Garbage and Recycle Committee decides not to go automated, we need to, we need to reroute, and that's, that's a process that will be done in committee. And I should state that I, we will be reappointing that committee, but I also have two citizens that will serve on that committee, so we have some citizen input on there. But we need to, just if we do nothing, we need to redo our routes anyway, just because of the way that Quincy has grown eastward over the decades.
My next question is, we have a garbage committee already?
Yes.
When did that occur?
That was appointed in the last administration, and that had met previously. We'd met twice. It's Alderman Deuster House, Alderman Sasson, Alderman Farha, Alderman Brink. Did I miss anybody?
Just to be fair, we didn't meet as committee to discuss anything. We were thrown into a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to make a final decision on the recommendations that have come from the administration. So, frankly, there's, in my opinion, there's no committee, and there's been no committee input into any, any of the considerations we have here.
Well, and I think, I think this tells you how hard this is. If, if the committee had worked, say, a year on forming a recommendation, and then took it to the public, and the public said that's not palatable, then what do we do with this all again? This is why we need some type of a direction from the council. That way, it gives the committee direction, it gives the administration direction, and we can move forward. Your Honor?
Yes.
Jennifer, will recycle remain the same that it is then, every week?
Yes, recycle will remain the same every week, due to the fact that we have our tubs already in place and not something that can be changed at the time.
Alderman Holbrook.
Glenda. Since this began as a budget issue, what impact, what positive impact will this have on the budget?
It's going to reduce the general subsidy, potentially several hundred thousand dollars. A lot of that's going to be determined, obviously, by the increase in the stickers and the usage, as well as the increase that we're going to be receiving from the tote, the monthly fee. So, and as Alderman Lepper said, you know, we estimate it low at 1,500. It could potentially be 3,000 during that set time period. So, you know, all our numbers have been projections based upon past history.
Right.
So, that's what we're looking at.
Are there any additional...
I just have one simple question. It may have been answered before, but I, when did we stop enforcing the ordinance that said that we, does anybody know when we stopped enforcing that ordinance, allowing, you know, allowing the private haulers into Quincy? I mean...
I don't personally. It predated my administration.
You'd have to ask one of the older Aldermen, but I don't think we, since I've been on the council, we've never enforced it.
Can we repeal that?
Well, I think, I think, Alderman Ryan, to answer your question, that's what we would take back to Garbage and Recycle Committee and say that either we need to have some type of a license or a franchise, or we need to repeal it. We can't continue to have an ordinance on our books that's not being enforced. So, that's, that's where, you know, we would take that back to committee to study, and ultimately, a recommendation for the council. Alderman Brink?
Just quick, quick. Glenda, so assuming the $12.99 would be billed on a water bill?
Correct.
Have we considered monthly billing for the water bill, as that might go a little high now?
I believe the Utilities Committee has kind of been tossing that around as far as changing it to monthly, but I don't think at this point, anything has actually been determined. So, this is based on the quarterly period, which is where the water bills are right now. And that way, there's no extra costs that will be assessed to the household for the billing service, for the totes.
And, you know, we talk about efficiencies, creating efficiencies in the process. Have we ever asked our current employees to, for suggestions for efficiencies and make the process better and more cost-effective?
For the garbage and recycle?
Yes.
It's been a highly talked-about subject all the way around. We have talked with Central Services quite a bit. One of the big topics they know that needs to be done is the rerouting. The one thing that, with automated trucks and the projections that we provided you, did have a computer system that will help, you know, with a lot of the efficiencies, with the tracking of who's using totes, where they're at, when they were out, and that sort of thing. So, that's going to create efficiencies. Plus, right now, you know, as they stated earlier, you know, the Friday routes are really heavy and the Monday routes are really heavy. So, this will, you know, hopefully even the playing field a little bit more and be a little more efficient as not having so many trucks running back and forth chasing things.
So, it's my understanding that we're going to have 75-cent stickers, and then a person can choose that they would like to do a tote, roll-out container for $12.99 a month, and that will go on their water bill. And so, as a truck drives down the street, it will pick up a tote automatically, and then the next house may have stickers and one or two trash bags, and the driver will then get out of the truck and throw it in to the truck. And as we keep on, so we wouldn't have two trucks driving down the street, one picking up totes and one picking up trash or garbage bags.
Right. The plan is to use the most efficient method, which, if there's totes on that street, that's going to be the most efficient method. When we talked to the private haulers, they even stated that just because you only have one driver in an automated truck does not guarantee that that driver is not going to have to get out, possibly to rearrange the tote, pick up excess bags around it. So, and, you know, this is a similar manner.
So, then residents will select this, and this will be kind of voluntary basis. So...
Yes.
Basically, every issue that was addressed through the public meetings with the person saying they, you know, they didn't want their cost to go to $1.50 a sticker, would make them go private. So, they would have a choice at this point, right?
Correct.
And my, also, my understanding is, we are changing the ordinance today in order to put this in place sometime in the future. Just because it's in the ordinance doesn't mean we have to do it at this point, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
And so, by adopting this ordinance with the combination of Alderman Farha and Alderman Lepper's, this would give us an opportunity to go forward, maybe May 1st, if the committee continues to meet, to make sure the process is appropriate and cost-effective.
Correct.
If the committee determines it's not cost-effective, it would be abandoned, I would imagine.
That's correct. Alderman Farha.
Yes, I just want to make sure the public understands what we're saying. No one is required to go to a tote system. No one is required to put anything on their water bill. It's a choice. If they so opt to pick up the service at $12.99 or whatever number that it has finally arrived at, they could choose to have it billed monthly or every quarter on their water bill, and they could choose to pay some fee, I don't know if you know exactly what it is, for the totes. They'll have to buy the totes in effect, or lease the totes from us. Correct?
That's correct. The one thing with the billing on the water bill, right now, the water bill still is at a quarterly period.
Right, so it'd be quarterly.
So, right now, it would be quarterly, unless that Utility Committee changes that to a monthly.
But nobody's going to force them to leave the sticker.
Correct. It's pure choice by the individual household.
Right. User fee.
Alderman Havermill.
Yes.
I keep coming back to this. We haven't set anything in concrete. If we're going to send it back to committee and rehash this all over again, send it back to committee and rehash it all. I'm not for tabling it, but I just, I cannot believe we're going to sit here and vote for something, and we have no details. It's amazing to me. I cannot believe we're doing this.
You have a sticker, you have a sticker price increase, and you have that the option is in the ordinance for us to go to automatic.
It's strictly amazing to me. Because what the answer you just gave about still having to go by and pick garbage up, and some streets will be picked up fully and some will have totes, possibly, does absolutely nothing to mitigate our MIC issue. Nothing. Absolutely nothing.
Are there any...
And that's the biggest problem we have.
Are there any additional questions? So, we have a motion and a second on amending the ordinance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
No.
Havermill?
No.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Eleven i's, three noes.
So, the ordinance is now amended. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
I move we adopt the ordinance as amended.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, so it was Lepper and... Okay. Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
No.
Havermill?
No.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Eleven i's and three noes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Heather, report of the finance. Transfers be $42,000, expenditures $306,927.72, and payroll to be $660,966.24. Farha, Hostlog, Sasson, Deuster House, Havermill Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report we received and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Aye.
We have a motion of second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermill?
Aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolino?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Fourteen i's.
So ordered. Madam Clerk, do you have any new business?
No, sir.
Alderman Gill? Alderwoman Ma?
No, sir.
Alderman Deuster.
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderman Bauer?
Yes, just a comment. Had a lady call that wanted to thank the snow removal crews on their, how well they did their streets and the handicap spots for, so she appreciated that. Her other comment was a complaint that, that she asked why I have a nicer chair than the rest of yous. And I said, well, the chairs are the same. And she says, no, yours rock all the time. I said, it's not my fault. They don't use their options. So, if you're on the camera rocking your chair.
Right, sorry.
My turn?
Yes, it is, sir.
Just good luck to the lady raiders. I believe they're going for sectionals this evening, probably right now as we speak. What's the score? 19-14 at the half, so giddy up. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Havermill. Just would like to welcome the Boy Scouts here today. I think you saw a good meeting. I think it shows that in government, there are no easy answers, and there's no, you know, when you're dealing with difficult solutions, there's, there's no answer that there's no magic bullet, so to speak. And so, these are things we have to deal with to deal with all the time, you know, not only do we have to deal with issues on paying for things, we have to deal with efficiencies, we have to deal with how we pay for roads and, and try to make everybody happy, so I saw you, I think you saw a good civic lesson tonight, and we'll be talking to you after the meeting, see if you have any questions, so thank you for being here, I want to, just for the media standpoint, just to be clear,